Because safety to me is, you can't put a dollar finger on it. And unequivocally, it's probably the most important thing, I think. As parents, we worry about every day with our children. That's really what it was all about. So just kind of opening up the discussions about, is it possible? Is it viable? What are the possibilities? So again, this is, the PTA was kind of that catalyst to have discussions about it in education for parents. But then myself as the parent wanted to bring this up and kind of set the motion forward to find out what possibilities were.
Thank you. Any questions?
Was the, oh, sorry. Are there some, any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
Was the time from PD, so say something about if they had time from PD to the school?
Well, I can tell you, it would vary depending on where we are. But the national average is three minutes to get to an active shooter scene. But you know, we all know, you know, the floor shooting, it was done and open three and a half. And he had pulled a fire alarm and walked out with everybody else, so.
One of the, institutionally from my level, I look at it as a campus, the elementary school and the high school. And one of the things I think in the very near future, the conversations between the Plymouth Regional High School Board and the Plymouth School Board is to say, work cooperatively in what's in the best interest of the campus, rather than having two separate entities doing two separate things. And then to work with the Plymouth Police Department in terms of what's the best way to secure as best we can both buildings, given that we're on the same road, we use each other's buildings. It's interchangeable down here on a daily basis for services and things like that. So I think that's, that's where, as you look at the 1920 budget, I think that's where the conversations take place. And I'm happy to introduce the issue to the high school board to say, would you be interested in talking to the folks across the lawn about, you know, safety within the entire complex? Surely from a taxpayer perspective, you know Plymouth pays 24% of the bills next door and 100% of the bills here. So I think that they would be particularly interested in a joint venture, more so than one here, one there. And in both buildings are very different in terms of safety. And there's the obvious, there's a different level of issue within a K through eight building versus a nine through 12 building. So the resources next door obviously are more complex and there are more of them next door than there are here merely because of what's going on in the two buildings. But I guess it's, it is really time for both buildings to talk about regional security issues that we have with Steve and his departments. But I'm willing, I'm very willing to broach the subject with the high school board.
On those same lines, how about adding funds or personnel to school psychology or to identify those kids who are at risk of, you know, if they're talking with a school officer, I mean, these guys are great getting here in three minutes. But if we can identify the kids, you know, 30 days or three days before you, or three years, never having, would be even more.
Yeah. We have discussed, certainly next door, there is a social worker, clinical social worker next door in the building also, a full-time school psychologist. Here, we've had a contracted school psychologist to meet the needs of IEPs and as a resource for the community. So I think that if you were going to have conversations, I would be pushing a clinical social worker here that does work with the homes as well as health-related issues in it. So that people have come forward and said, maybe more guidance counselors, I think that the need most likely, more so than that, is in the social work area. So the outreach is there, we have the ability to move around. So that would be, from my perspective, if we were going to add resources, that's what I'd be recommending.
Are there any other school systems in New Hampshire that do this, that share an SRO or?
Some, yeah, some communities do. The standalone communities have a school resource officer assigned to that schools. So they're moving around and I don't know, Steve would know those, how those resources are used better than I. But I know in talking with superintendents, they have a school resource officer for the community and then they're, they work around, they work, yeah. But there are lots of, lots of communities that have school resource officers.
Sorry, is the school resource officer a dedicated police officer or is it a school employee?
No, it's a, it's a police employee. Yeah, it's a, it's a fully, fully sworn in police officer who in the summer works regular shifts and is part of the police department. And they, and the difference is that they answer to the chief, they don't answer to the superintendent or to their police officers.
However, we work in conjunction with their mission statement here, we got to understand that, that yeah, I'm in charge, but you know, I would expect if my officers in here, Julie asked them to do something, they better do it. So, so you know, we have that. The other thing you got to think about in the, and we're, this is in its infancy stages, but you would all have to decide in the community, do we want them in full uniform? Do we not? Do we want them to blend in with the teachers? You know, so those are all things you have to consider when you're, you know, when you start to develop. Probably the other thing is very important is to get the right personality in here at the school because you don't want somebody who A is no good with kids or doesn't have any investment in the community here in the school because they're not going to care. Go back to the floor shooting, you had a deputy there who never went in the building when the active shooter was happening. Why? The second I saw it, it said 38-year veteran. Well, you don't put a retired, unduty person in a school. You put somebody who's young, motivated, and wants to do things and be involved and invested. So those are all things when we get down with, we'll have to have bigger discussions about those things.
In terms of finances, because I'm sure people will say, well, what is all this? We already have a mechanism with the town of Plymouth. Our grounds crews are actually employees of the town of Plymouth. And so we work with the town of Plymouth and a portion of those salaries are paid by the high school, Plymouth Elementary School, and the town of Plymouth. So it's, that's easy to take care of based on where folks spend their time. So there are no bureaucratic complications about how do they get paid or anything. Those things are easy to work out.
How often do the police come in now at all? Do they monitor the school?
They're here all the time.
That's what I understood, that they have come regularly.
Yeah, well, I want to say regularly, we've been, and if anybody reads the police logs, like last week we had over 500 calls for service in the one week. So whenever we have a chance, yeah, we absolutely try and do it as much as we can. You know, plus the view, it is that I have several offices that do have kids in the schools. So they come here, they visit, I encourage that. I urge them, bring your cruiser in the morning, drop your kids off. Love having all that happen, they love having them here.
It's awesome.
We do it as much as we can.
And the other communities, you'll see the Holderness Cruiser, the Ashland Cruiser here. The other communities interact with our high school too because their students are here. So I think for not having designated folks here, we have a great police presence here every day. I mean, it's a great, it's a great relationship in the area. And that includes the state police. Occasionally you'll see a trooper's car.
So what is what has brought this subject up? One item that kind of got overlooked with Parkland School, and maybe I'm wrong, but from what I understand, Parkland had a very high arrest rate of their students in their high school. And it was reflecting badly upon the school to have so many of their kids being arrested on a regular basis. So the town, the superintendent, the school board and got together and said, we need to change the policy because it's hampering their ability to get employed as adults, to have all these arrests known about them. Maybe it gets it gone, maybe it's gone with their team. So they changed the policy, whereas this young boy with the last name of Cruz had been, called the police 24 times, I guess, in the home. He had put a gun to his, to the foster parent's biological son on two occasions and threatened to kill him. The foster parents or adopted parents called the police, nothing was done because there was this overlying policy within the school that they wanted to reduce the arrests of the students. And sure enough, they went from being one of the highest arrest schools to one of the lowest. And it just kept waiting and waiting and waiting until something major happens. And I would very much like to have the police involve much sooner with, if it's going to take arrests, then let it be that. And if there is a resource officer in the school, just like I'm sure what the administration has at the high school, to do what Greg said, identify the problems before and act on it something before it gets too much. I just stress that.
Well, we don't, we don't change, police have laws to enforce and we have no such policy. So if one of our students breaks the law, they're arrested by the police. I mean, that's, there are no such games being played here.
Well, I, I respect it here.
And, you know, and I, and I think if you ask all the chiefs in descending towns, they'd say the same thing. A school never steps in. I mean, if we come looking for a kid, the doors are open.
More so, it's actually a very good partnership.
Yeah, it's a great partnership, yeah.
Let's face it, if you don't know, the juvenile justice system stinks. It doesn't, it's not effective, the recidivism rate is extremely high. So we tend to provide more services and the best place is actually in the school to get those services. So lots of times, we can get them better services and help out rather than just charging them. And sometimes we will charge them, but then the judge orders them to do the services in the school. So it's kind of a partnership, we try and work together because each case is different, each kid is different. So we try to custom tailor what we're going to do to each kid because they have different needs, you know? They've been through different traumas, stuff like that. So we're trying to fix them so they can become productive members of this community rather than just merely punishing them because that doesn't do anybody any good.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, we work very closely with Katie in restorative justice. So you'll see an awful lot, particularly the younger kids, go through that process. There's court, there's court oversight, but they're going through the restorative justice process with Katie and those folks do a terrific job.
But also to support that, as a parent-teacher association, we made investments now at a new level. It used to be seventh and eighth, but now we're investing in the fifth and sixth for awareness. So we changed that tenure band of age to now go to a younger, younger group to try to have those educational discussions before, you know? So we're making investments through Katie at an earlier stage now. So we're kind of hitting it in multiple areas.
Without having an existing school resource officer, what, what would, how would you characterize the level of involvement with Plymouth PD at the high school level in terms of either calls for service or arrests?
Extremely well. I can tell you, every time a student is suspended there, I get notified and I get their suspension letter and I document it in our computer system. That way we also know that, okay, there's a kid that may be walking around the street right now, he's not at school or she's not at school because they got suspended and they got suspended for X, Y, and Z. So we do that all the time, we communicate with each other all the time. If they feel there's somewhat of a problem and we can help, we'll step in and just have a sit-down talk with that student and see if we can help straighten it out because I'm a big fan of let's fix it before something actually happens. So we're intimately involved in both schools. I mean, to the point where I've gotten calls from, you know, Mrs. Flair, Mrs. Flynn, we have a parent who their kid hasn't shown up for school in a week, two weeks, a month, we go knock on the door, your kid's going to school, we put them in the cruiser, we drive them here. So we're very involved in both schools.
How about arrests? I mean, is it, in a typical year?
I would say it's very high. To be honest, we have a really good, great group of kids here in old schools.
I appreciate that.
It's not high. It happens, yeah. I would say during the course of a year, probably less than I can count of one again. I mean, it's just not that. And plus, like I said, I'm a huge fan of, we tend to use the restorative justice program at Katie more than anything because we have the best success with that. And we've seen kids do a complete 180 term and they go into that program and it's wonderful. It's way better than you stick somebody in the juvenile justice system, now they're labeled delinquent, now, just getting over that hurdle is difficult for these kids. So we try not to do that.
Good.
Any more questions? Thank you. Principals report.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good night.
Thanks.
We'll be back in touch.
Another plaque to add to our collection here at Plymouth Elementary School, I wanted to recognize Julie Panis there in the yellow. She is our STEM teacher, and I can pass this around to you. Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics here at Plymouth Elementary School. And thanks to her significant knowledge and desire to integrate STEM into the classroom content, she has transformed our students' learning experiences. So we are super proud that her hard work of going above and beyond in the classroom to promote STEM, the STEM mindset and the STEM skillset. She was recognized last month in Atlanta, Georgia, at the International Technology Engineering Education Association, the ITEEA. Their theme was building bridges within the STEM community and beyond, and Mrs. Panis has done a great job building those bridges at Plymouth Elementary School. Also at the convention, Julie gave three presentations at this international conference, including one with our science teacher, Jennifer Weatherby. This type of professional work really sharpens a teacher's pedagogy, which really supports the learning with students. So I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Panis.
And I got to meet Monty Johnson.
Yeah.
See, I invented the super soaker and the nerve plaster. Speaking was very cool.
That's awesome. So just wanted to say thank you and.
And I appreciate the support, the words given, the STEM program over the years. It's really been, really been very, very exciting to get to present with Jen at that conference.
It's a real source of pride and, you know, obviously it's great out the students, so.
And supporting these positions, this is unique. This is not typical of schools at this level to have this sort of resource. So it's great for our kids and to have someone with Julie's expertise. I mean, she's got every certification under the sun in terms of science and everything. So it's, it's special. It's what makes Plymouth Elementary School a very special place. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
So we had some really special events and student exhibitions this, this month. On April 5th, Plymouth Elementary School students and families came together for One Book, One Community. Families signed up in February to read the book, Vishnatri. The book was told about Ally, a sixth-grade girl who struggles with reading and thanks to a caring, knowledgeable teacher discovers she has dyslexia and she is able to get the supports she needs to be successful. The story celebrates our differences, creative mindset, perseverance, and the face of adversity, grits. So the evening, our One Book, One Community evening had these awesome interactive stations all throughout the media center. I think there were about 10 of them and students loved them, but they put the students in that uncomfortable position of not how, really struggling to figure something out. There was a train your brain and drawing, a drawing, a writing challenge with a mirror, trying to write something with the letters are reversed. During the book discussion, students had an opportunity to connect with some of their favorite characters who faced adversity. Sarah Sanborn, fifth-grade teacher, and one of our coordinators of the event said, quote, "We all experience the world a little differently and as we find our way to understand these differences, we can grow together with kindness and compassion, building a stronger community." Thank you to Sarah for coordinating this important event and to Michelle Aprilliano, Lori Cleary, Erica Lebrun, Patty O'Neill, and Kathleen Smith for their work on this wonderful project. We're also discussing the book for next year, so if you have any ideas, please let me know. Any ideas? Anne was pivotal in all of this as well, as always. She's always right there for us. So that was a great night and students did leave with a magnet as a momento, so that's where the grit magnet is, be a hero. Great messages. On Wednesday, April 18th, at 4:30, the third grade team hosted an author's tea where students in grades three shared their narrative and their informational writing with parents. The author's tea was a beautiful event, a true celebration of learning and growth that provided students an authentic opportunity to showcase their writing. These authentic opportunities really raise the expectation for student work. What, someone is going to read this really makes a big difference in their performance. And the tea was really intimate, it was just their grade parents. And the teachers suggested fancy attire, which gave the event importance and a sense of fun and the kids looked amazing as well. It was great to see so many families with their children and teachers all around the writing experience. This is the second year, just to make a connection with what some of the work that we've been doing. This is our second year with, working with the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. And the event reflects the process of publishing, a work of narrative writing, of informational writing, and the third grade students right now are working on opinion slash argumentative writing. Third grade teachers Jennifer Dale, Scott Southworth, and Christine Sterner, along with special education teacher Erica Lebrun, have done an outstanding job establishing a culture of writing. So I wanted to thank them as well. The next night, we had another great event in fourth grade, the water, the first ever water fair. And really it started last July here at Plymouth Elementary School with, where fourth-grade teachers from around this area came together with the Department of Environmental Services at the State of New Hampshire. They're planning this week, Wednesday, downtown along the river, they're having a water festival. They also have a competition within that. So all of our fourth grade students came up with a question about water and started to research it and came up with a hypothesis and evidence and did some experiments and spent together, all of their work together and had the water fair. And we had judges, our science teachers, Alyssa Greenler and Jennifer Weatherby and Amy Uland from Plymouth State University, looked at all 40 of the projects and went through, asked intimate questions, gave substantive feedback, and came up with some winners, which I thought was really difficult. But they talked to parents and explained the role and the process and it was really a great night for us. And I do want to congratulate Anthony Torres and to Addison Malane and Avery Tuttle Wilcox. They will be going down to the water festival and be part of a bigger competition from, so we're excited about that. Thank you to fourth grade teachers Andy Mercer, Jill Perkins, Jess Watchkin for bringing this important project together. And I also want to commend those judges, Alyssa Greenler, Jen Weatherby, and Amy Uland. Just a great, great collaboration. So you may see them walking downtown, lots of fourth graders coming to town, so. And just, I think you're noticing, we're really trying to set up authentic experiences for students. It's, and I, it really motivates us to go out beyond the classroom and I think it really shows that in our student work. So we're really excited about this.
And the village district water and sewer commissioners and the, their folks really did a great job, one, in attracting this conference to the town of Plymouth and also making sure that there was a real learning experience for our kids. Kudos to them for, for their work doing this.
Yeah, we're excited about it and I think our, our presentations look like winners. And they all were, they all, I think all students learned a lot through that process. You probably saw some eighth graders maybe walking downtown. On Wednesday, April 18th, they participated in the high ropes course at Plymouth State University. This has become part of our students' ultimate experience after participating in our own climbing here at Plymouth Elementary School. They really spend about five years in project adventure doing the ropes course right here in our gymnasium. The event was led by Plymouth State University students who are majoring in adventure education along with Jamie Hannan, coordinator of the graduate program in adventure learning. The students started out with some problem-solving games and finished with some high adventures, high adventure challenges. Adventure learning is always, quote, "challenge by choice." No one is ever pressured into doing anything they do not feel comfortable with attempting. Although we did have some of our students way up in, way up in the rafters. They loved it. The students had a great time and we finished our, finished having lunches right there at the Allwell Building and walked back to PES. I want to thank the PE teachers, Doug McManus and Eli Chamberlain, who organized this adventure for us, and the eighth grade team as well. So great, great event. And just last week, on May 1st, our fifth graders received the Hannaford Helps, which includes an additional $1,000. So they received over $3,000 toward their participation in the powerful amounting classroom project that takes place with AMC at the Joe Dodge Lodge in Pinkham Notch. PES fifth graders are enrolled in the leadership development and team building with a focus on ecology and earth science. The PES learning community would like to thank families for shopping locally and for participating in the Hannaford Helps. Thank you to Plymouth Hannaford Supermarket for always helping out with our students and families as well. I do have a slew of dates, I can run down or send you via email.
You can run them down for the public, but also, and send them an email.
Sure.
It'd be great.
May 9th is the water festival. May 10th is the, it's a student and parent presentation, Have You Heard of Vaping?, which is really important and I actually have some information about that.
The high school is funding a full day of vaping awareness. There's a speaker coming in who will speak to all the high school kids plus all the elementary school kids in SAU 48 from grades five through eight. And so your students will be walking across the lawn early in the afternoon or around lunchtime or something.
Yep, 11 to 12, yep.
And so this is a real issue. I mean, this is, this is, not only is it a legal issue, it's more a health issue than anything else. And so we need to bring awareness to the parents and to our students that, you know, this is, this is harmful. And, you know, they need to be aware of the contents of these, of these things. And so, and I, we're behind already, to be very honest with you. So, you know, we're going to do the best we can to get the word out. We'll be doing, we'll be doing a blast, telephone blast to parents. Be a parent event at night at the high school and all parents are welcome to attend that. So this is important.
May 11th, we have a fundraiser for Montreal, Hat Day. Students can wear hats and bring, for a dollar. That's this Friday. The week of May 14th through the 18th, grade eight is taking the statewide testing. And the week of May 21st and 25th, students in grades three and four will be doing the state testing. One of my favorite days of the year, or days, May 17th, 18th, and the 21st, we have kindergarten connections. Right now we have exactly 40 students enrolled and it keeps kind of climbing the closer we get to the date, so. March 24th, we have grades, grade four students go to the Rock Estate in Bethlehem. May 30th, we're looking forward to our spring concert. June 6th, we have Academic Bear and a STEM showcase for grades K through four, kindergarten through four. And June 12th, for the grades five through- through four, and June 12th for the grades five through eight. June 18th and 19th, Grade Eight Trip to Memorial. June 20th is our rescheduled Earth Day event. We are going to try to, try to move forward with that. It's going to be a great day. And June 22nd is the last day of school.
And your graduation?
Graduation is June 22nd.
So it'll be a half day of school on 22nd, and the eighth graders will graduate that evening.
What was the?
Are you available, Mr. Chairman?
May 30th.
Looked to see my last one, Tom.
Well, we need, we need you there for old times' sake.
Yeah.
For the old times' sake.
Hi. So a couple of things to note. Back on April 6th, Plymouth Elementary welcomed a professional bike stunt rider, Chris Pullos, and students in grades one through six enjoyed watching him as he did a variety of really cool and amazing bike stunts. He came into our gymnasium and was there, and he interacted with the students. His emphasis on the day was really to remind and highlight the students of those pieces that we really express of being safe, being respectful, and being responsible. So he used a slideshow, some interactive skits with the students and activities, and his humor and a lot of his stories from his childhood kept the students engaged and interested. And he, at one point, took our Be Your Best You to the max when he jumped over myself and Mr. Chamberlain with his bike. And we were both very grateful that he was at his best that day. And it was a clean jump, but it was a lot of fun, and they, yeah, they, they loved it. They had a good time. But also part of this event, too, on the other side of it, was it gave our teachers the opportunity to have some time together while all the students were in the assembly to really collaborate and work on planning lessons together. So that was a big emphasis of that assembly as well. So that, that was fun, and we really enjoyed having him. In terms of the spring sports teams, we finally have had some opportunities to get outside and play. Back on April 9th, the returning track and field athletes opened up over at Guilford on a very chilly April 9th meet, where on the flip side, the younger kids in grades fifth and sixth went back to Guilford on May 2nd for a beautiful sunny afternoon. And then most recently, the team competed at Interlakes on Thursday, May 3rd. And our softball and baseball teams opened up on May 2nd over at Thornton. Baseball lost in the, in their opener, one to five, but even the week out with an 11-2 win versus Ashland on last Thursday, May 3rd. And the softball team was off to a strong start with two wins. Very close game, a 10-9 win at Thornton and a 6-3 win over Ashland. And coming up this week, we've got our track team traveling to Kennett tomorrow, and softball and baseball teams are busy with heading to Kennett on Wednesday, May 9th, hosting Thornton on Thursday, May 10th, and then traveling to Haverhill on Friday, May 11th. So they're, they're pretty active this week, so it's good to see. And then lastly, just to recap, I know Brandon Pike had mentioned on Wednesday, May 2nd, we did have Chief LaFave and Sergeant Rod Diamond come and offer that ADD training, the Avoid, Deny, Defend, to members of the PTA and a variety of PES parents. And the presentation really offered the parents just the ability to see the training that our faculty and staff undergoes and what we receive. And then it was just also really great information for anyone to, to have. And, you know, of course, they were stressing the pieces of being aware of your surroundings, knowing all the time where your available exits are, and just ways to protect yourself in no matter what location you may be, not always necessarily a school setting. But many of the parents commented that they really appreciated the information, the demonstrations, and were certainly grateful for, you know, the thoughtful work and the care and the communication and the, you know, just the relationship that we have with our officers. So that was a great job, and we're very thankful to them. And then we have coming up this week on Wednesday, we'll have our annual, our spring bus evacuation drills will take place again on Wednesday morning during the drop-off as the buses are rolling in. And many thanks to our safety committee members who volunteer to, you know, take the kids through the drills and help them out with that, and of course, for all their help and their care and their work throughout the school year.
Is that a drill that only happens with the kids that ride buses, or do you incorporate the kids that get dropped off as they make exposure to buses as they get older?
Yeah, I mean, historically, we've done it with the students that are riding the buses. We have two. We do one in the fall, we do one in the spring. But even though we understand that not every student rides a bus, that's the nice, the majority of the kids are getting that drill sense, and we do typically do it a lot, especially coming forward in the spring because, you know, we have so many field trips coming up. So again, it's just kind of a good refresher reminder for the kids. And, and, you know, especially as the kids are getting older every year, it's, they just, they know the drill, so to speak, you know? They do a good job with it. Our kids really do. They're very helpful, good listeners.
It's great to see the older kids jump right down and help the little ones. They just get that drill. It's wonderful.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Consent items, claims, and payroll, we've all signed off. Any correspondence this evening?
There is, Mr. Chairman, and you all received a copy of it. It's, Brian Murphy sent us a notification that the Planning Board is reviewing an application for a boundary line adjustment to the property next door owned by Mistress Simpson. And the adjustment is made with the neighbors on the River Ridge side of the property. So it's a minor boundary line adjustment and really does not impact us at all, but I wanted you to be aware of it since we are, the district isn't a butter to the, the activity. Also, I want to draw your attention, I'm not sure if I did in April or not, we, the high school district has purchased the 11 acres directly behind the school, and it jogs between the two properties. So that land is now in the possession of the Pembroke Regional School District. And what that does for us, it connects both campuses, and we're actually going back and forth on land that we own now rather than cutting across with Mr. Fletcher's permission. Mr. Fletcher passed away. He's a great neighbor and a great friend of both school districts, and so the state put that land up for sale. The district signed a purchase and sale agreement, the Pembroke District, and it went, voters approved it, and so the closing took place, and so that land is there. So what it does for us is we legally can go over that land now. Also, all of our trails, our ski trails and our walking trails now are on our property along, so that makes it easier for the town of Plymouth to take care of, of those things. Also, there's about two and a half, excuse me, two and a half usable acres between the two schools. And, and so at some point in the future, certainly not, not, not me and perhaps not us, but in the future, if there's a need for a practice field or that kind, I think the land lays nicely for practice facilities, more so than game facilities. But that can be cleared and used as, as recreational space way down the road. So it was a good, it was a good purchase, very reasonable purchase, $20,000, and I think it makes sense for the town of Plymouth and the Pembroke Regional School District. So that has taken place.
Discussion items, fiscal year '18, I need to update.
Yeah, I just want to, it's that time of year in Plymouth, we're, we're basically broke, and I just wanted you to bring that to your attention. It's always good news. But in terms of revenue estimates, as you look at the revenue page, which is this sheet, we're at 96% of our revenue coming in, and so that's, that's a good place to be with two months remaining in the fiscal year. So that means we're going to hit our revenue targets, and so that's a good thing. If you look at Dan Rosner's brief summary, rather than give you pages and pages of expenditures, you'll find that he's basically, at, at this moment in time, is projecting an unassigned fund balance of $31,757. We'll finish with less than that, but right now, that, that's where we're at. So I would ask the board to formally freeze spending for the rest of the year. We've encumbered all of our contractual obligations, so everyone's going to be paid, all the bills are going to be paid. It's just $31,000 is out there, and then no more new spending. And Julie and I spoke about this on Friday. She's got everything squared away on her side, so if the board could take that action, we'll be set, and that'll put us in a position, barring any unforeseen problem, that we would finish clearly in the black on June 30th.
Intertain a motion to freeze the budget. So, in favor?
Thank you.
Use of faculty resources, 1819.
Yes, this is a fancy way of saying, here's what we're going to do with the teachers. And I'm trying to be politically correct, not sending one off to a safe place and everything else. Julie, you want to walk through this?
Sure.
Basically, grades two through eight will all have three teachers, three sections of each grade. It's clear that's what the public wants, and that's where the board has assigned its, its resources. And then there'll be five people in kindergarten and first grade, and Julie will talk to you a little bit about the, the use of that faculty.
Right. So basically, we'll have seven, it's, it's really not about the numbers. We'd like to do a K-1 blend. In any classroom in the school, there's a fourth grade classroom, there's the difference between a student who's maybe reading or performing at a second grade level all the way up to the senior in high school level. So really, we're not talking about trying to, to, so it kind of makes sense to blend some, some of the classes, but do it very thoughtfully and methodically to try to set up a culture or learning environment where meeting students right where they're at. So we, I've always seen this as a, as a great idea and seen it work, but I don't want to, we didn't want to do it unless we had a teacher who's really enthusiastic about taking, taking on that sort of innovative look at learning. So we do have, we do have a teacher who's really excited. Mrs. King is working hard at developing a project-based curriculum, a curriculum around leadership for the K, the K-1 students. We're getting ready to go into the kindergarten connections, and so we would talk, talk about that as well. But basically, looking at that kindergarten and first grade team, those all five teachers kind of working together for all of those students, but, so we're, we're excited about that. We don't have all of the answers, but we're going to take enrollment, student by student. And that basically, you know, puts the enrollment to about 14 students per classroom in those five. And I think it's, again, not that it's about the enrollment, but I do think with the two teachers at the first grade level, if for some reason we had move-ins, there would be a nice opportunity to kind of have a little bit of movement if we had those seven students move in again, so.
Would this be a shared classroom between?
No. That's the vision in, in the end, but this year it will just be with Mrs. King's classroom.
Okay.
So you'll have, just to be clear, two kindergarten teachers, one of those kindergarten teachers teaching a blended class of kindergarten and first grade?
We'll have two kindergarten teachers.
Yep.
A K-1 blended teacher.
Okay.
And then two first grade teachers.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So other than that, straight through, you know, the class sizes, I think, look outstanding. It's funny, in the middle school, right now, there's sixth graders, but we have the 42, then 62. So I think it's, you know, teachers, you know, kind of adjust that next year.
It's much easier at the middle school to handle bigger crowd because they're all based on certification anyway, so it's, it's just much easier.
They're fine.
It's more content-driven and, and those are good numbers for a middle school classroom, to be very honest with you.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
There's absolutely nothing wrong. I mean, the state standard is, is 25. There are schools that have more than 25, and, and we're at 20 and 21, so we're in pretty good shape.
Any questions?
Sure.
Thank you. Nomination lead request?
Yes, a very brief, non-public session. We have adult three, co-curricular nominations to finish up, and then a brief update on collective bargaining.
Any other business?
I, I don't have any.
Privilege up the floor, too.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Selectman.
I'd entertain a motion to go in a non-public session.
So.
Second, in favor? Thank you all. Thank you.